Mary Branley.
Here.
Mauro Hogan.
Yes.
Oh goodness, Alexis Fishbone.
Yes.
And Hillary Griffiths.
Yes.
And Natasha Berry, yes. Okay, we are called to order at seven oh seven. Moving on to public comments. Colleen, I don't think we have any public comments and um in the, nothing in the folder. Okay, and I don't see any hands raised. Um, looks like it's us school folk, so we will move on. To urgent business Superintendent Haas, any urgent business?
No urgent business tonight.
Wonderful. Okay, moving right along to our student representative report, Emily, floor is yours.
Okay, everyone, so good night. This October twenty fourth, starting off with highlights, we had our second pep rally. Some students did, did leave early and mostly seniors, and in the future, we want to make it a different block. Because work studies are usually during A or G, and it was taking up a block. We had the PSAT on the twenty second, which went super well. Everyone, you know, super prepared, it was great. Football won the ten eleven game versus Groton Dunn stable and the ten eighteen game versus North Middlesex. The golf sectionals ten fifteen happened on ten fifteen, and we're waiting for the results currently. Senior sunrise happened on the eighteenth at six thirty AM at Alumni. I've heard a lot of positive comments about that. The girls soccer senior night was on ten twenty one, and it went super well as well. Today, we had purple pinky day, which was a huge success, at least for my block. I had so much fun helping out with that. Field hockey became league champions, which was super exciting. The Spanish, Spanish exchange students visited for a week, all positive comments. A co- communications one team won an MIA sportsmanship award, and it's a class of all freshmen, which was really impressive. Moving on to concerns, um during the football fan section, we were really surprised because it was super amazing, you know. Everyone was really co- cooperative. The section leaders and the student DJ really stepped up to the play after the conversation about the appropriate student behavior. And everyone is super proud of them. The opposing team parents talked with the police to complain about the shot shouting. But Ms. Drav and Mr. Prahl didn't hear anything worth complaining about. Parents on both sides and referees came to Mr. Aria to complain about shouting. But we don't have any updates on that. Upcoming, term one is ending soon. We have an advisory. Tomorrow, we have the schoolwide reward, which I've heard a lot of people are excited about. On November first, we have football and band senior night, and soon we're gonna have CPR certification where upperclassmen will have the choice. To join freshmen and teachers from all the schools were able to sign up for certification as well.
Right. Wonderful. Thank you so much for those updates. Let me go around to see if there's any comments or questions. From the school committee, uh Mary, I'll start with you.
Yeah, thank you, Emily, again. Um, one question, what is the schoolwide reward?
So for, since tomorrow is a half day, we've decided to cut the last two blocks into a reward. Since all the students have been super positive, we've seen great results with the phone ban. And what we're planning on doing is we wanna s- send everyone to the gym for a little, you know, social time. And after that, everyone will have about an hour, give or take, to do one of the choices. We sent out Google Form for everyone to make a choice on what they do. Some of them are watching movies, some of them are making collages, there's quiet reading, there's making a banner. All great choices and very festive for the Halloween season, too.
Great, excellent. Who um actually coordinated it? Sounds like you might have been involved.
Oh, no, I wasn't involved, but I did hear a lot about it. But um it was mainly the teachers. I heard that it was kind of a thing where a lot of teachers came together and voted positively towards it. I don't know all the details, but. It was unanimous.
Excellent. Enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Um Mauro?
I don't have anything other than uh that sounds really cool tomorrow, and I hope you have, you all have a great time. Thank you.
Alexis?
I don't have any questions, but it sounds like you're gonna be having more fun than I will be at that point in time. So enjoy.
Hillary?
Um, I was just, do you know when the term ends?
Um, I think it ends next week, but I know that all teachers are asking students to have any. To check their grades and if they have any comments about them or questions, they're asking for them to all be submitted by Friday, so everything can be worked out.
Oh, awesome. Enjoy the reward tomorrow. That's awesome. I love that you're, you guys are doing that and.
Wonderful. Um, I, I actually don't have any additional questions or follow up. I except for just to, you know, keep us updated on, I know football seasons, we're gonna kinda into the, well, the. Some of the seasons are football sporting events are ending, and we're heading into um. You know. I guess there's a lot of outdoor activity, but it's gonna be sunsetting soon after football, but I'm just curious on how the, the banter and the cheering and how that. Will either subside a little bit with the concerns about screaming or participation, or if that is something that you think is out of. I guess I'm trying to, is it out of proportion to what we normally experience, or do we feel like it's kinda usual for this time of year?
Well, I will say, I think it's been, we've seen a really positive, like. Increase in like more co- positive comments than negative comments. The cheering was a huge issue and it went away really quickly.
Okay, alright, so it seems like maybe it's not anything that's, and I maybe would ask, you know, Liz. I don't know if she's able to share um as well, if you're noticing that the. Outdoor activities is.
It was truly a tremendous turnaround.
Okay, great.
We had lots of conversations as we had told you we would, and the students were super responsive. However, the way it sounds. It, it sounds like they're saying something bad sometimes. When all they're saying is, we love you, Dylan, or so, they, you know, they use those screaming voices. And I think people are responding to that because we're so organized. And there's so many of the kids and they're having such a good time with so much energy. But we are re- really listening to what they're saying, and last week, there was nothing inappropriate.
Okay, so I, I'm really excited that the, it sounds like the, the feedback has been receptive and well received and. It hasn't really hampered the ability to kind of be outdoors and celebrate. So that's great. That's what I was kind of wondering, is it, do we feel like things are kind of. Taking a turn for the better, and it sounds that's the case, which is, which is wonderful. So thank you so much, and thanks, everyone, for working hard to kinda keep. Maynard um in a positive light within our community and across the state as well when people are coming here to um to play. I think that's it. Um, as always, Emily, you're welcome to, to, to stay, to hear any other parts of our um. The school committee meeting, so that's up to you. I'll just uh feel free, okay? Alright, um Brian, the superintendent report?
Yeah, hi, welcome. Nice to see everybody tonight. Um, the Green Meadow building project is probably on everybody's agenda since we have meetings. Um, at least once a week, if not more times per week, it's really going well. Um, for the most part, they've, they're doing the blasting, they are breaking up giant rocks. They are, if you haven't been, it's worth just walking up and taking a look behind the current Green Meadow, just to see. All the work that they've done as well. It's pretty incredible. I mean, it's a typical building project. It's gonna last through twenty twenty seven. Uh, but every time there's an issue, I'm happy to say that Colliers and MVG have been very responsive. Um, as you can see, they have, they've changed the construction access road, so it actually. Um, is behind Crowfield, if you will, in between Green Meadow and Crowfield. Um, so that alleviates some of the stress that was in the Crow Park parking lot right there. Um, so that was a positive step, and then really, it's just continuing on track. Um, more, lots of meetings about what kind of software, what kind of um things like that, you know, safety, you got an update. Technology, we've met on recently, Tony's been involved in some of the, like the FOB system or a key system and things like that, so it's really. Going well. We, you guys did a good job in hiring good companies, um very professional, very consistent. Um, the high school, we've had some early release days, as you saw. Um, there's work going on in grades nine to eleven using NWEA and the MAP growth data. Um, for us, it's great, it's new, it's not actually new, it's new to us, um and not every district uses it, quite frankly. Um, I think more and more districts are using it, and it's, it's normed, it's really. Interesting to see how it correlates to MCAS, and it helps us really measure our students' growth. Um, so there'll be more on that this year. Um Fowler. Um, also has been working on data and evaluations, um and student support plans. Um, and also the Newzella in terms of curriculum. Just really trying different strategies and different platforms to meet all students' needs. Um, which is a challenge, as you know, our population is pretty widespread, um and really, they've been working, everybody has, but. Working hard to meet everybody's needs, and you can see Green Meadow, um just a quick update that I provided on literacy instruction, and we'll have Karen out to a meeting. Um, in the near future to really, and, and maybe some of the staff as well, but to really go over a little more in depth. What's going on, but you can see it's really, really focusing and making sure that we have good quality tier one instruction. And depending on the grade, it's phonics to reading, or it's, if it's CKLA and Caminos. Um, in teaching tier one foundational skills and knowledge. Um. Working with the coaches, supporting students. Um, so really, the one part that we are talking about that we have. Hmm, improving our tier one and maintaining that where it's quality. Um, and then tier three, which is sort of the pullout special ed, we really have that. The part that is. Most challenging right now is really that tier two, and having the resources to meet those needs. Cause potentially, that's what keeps a student who is struggling, who isn't necessarily on an IEP by any means, but they're struggling. To get some additional support than typical, i.e. tier two. But then if that works well, then that just moves them back into tier one, the regular classroom, and they get the services there, and they're moving ahead and making progress. Um, and that's an ongoing educational. Component that every school system works with. They have quality tier one, tier two, and tier three instruction. And it really just depends on the student and the day. Um, so that's an overlap there, and. Be more on that as the year goes on. Um, I suppose the other thing I should say, I could say, it's not in here, but it's because I put this out last week, but I've done. Two thirds of my stay interviews, so I've met with um a variety of staff, so staff is really. Um, so it's open to everybody, like sentence secretaries, custodians, you name it. It tends to be teachers and paraprofessionals. Um, but I've met with about twenty or so high school staff members. And about a dozen or so Fowler staff members, and next week I'll go to Green Meadow and meet with. Roughly twenty or so Green Meadow staff members, um and then. Um, the next step is the conversations based on those, what are the trends, what are the, what, what, what am I hearing, what am I learning? Um, so I'll be able to update you on that in the near future, but it's, it is a, uh, it's a good experience. A lot of time, it's probably forty hours of time. But uh. It's one way, so it's funny, I think I learned this today, like, I should have known this, but when we say we have like an open door policy, right? That's a pretty common phrase in education. Um, so I could say that, and my door is physically open, but to get to my door, you need to get through a locked door. That Colleen has to buzz you in, and then you, and then you need to get through, you need to get past Colleen or Rhonda, depending who's there. So it's, so, and then you can get to my open door, right? So there are a lot of gates just built into systems, right? It's not easy, even if you're like a principal, you have to get through the secretary to get to the principal, so. It's nice to be able to set up a system where people who wanna talk can just set up, um, you know, they can sign up for a moment, come in for twenty minutes. And have that conversation. I, I get a lot of good feedback on that process. I think that feels good to them, feels good to me. Um, they're heard, I learn, and then we'll take it the next step from there. So just, that's an update.
Thank you so much, and I'm so glad you actually mentioned about the, cause I know that was a, it's a really big undertaking and. Um, the last time, cause you do this like every two years, from my recalling, right? That this is trying to, cause it's a big undertaking, we're ga- gathering the data and then kind of formulating some.
So last time I did it in March, to your point. So then by the time I gathered the data and then did a report out, it was really the end of the year, so then we used last year to implement those changes. This year, I said, ah, well, if I do it earlier, I could do it now. I can report out in November. I could conceivably do it annually.
It's just a shift of the timeline.
Have to do it earlier. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I, I thought it was a great idea when you started it. I appreciated the, the way that you synthesized all of the feedback. So it wasn't as if the staff can come talk to you, and then like, okay, then, then you actually had this really comprehensive follow up. With these are the themes or takeaways that I've heard from meeting with everyone, so it almost, it was like letting everyone know how extensive. The broad range of feedback was, and so that's just my um appreciation, as opposed to the exit interviews. I think this is really where you get more participation, um I feel, and maybe more value in the feedback as well, so. Thank you. Um, I did wanna just say, um, the literacy pieces of your, um, just for the school committee. I know we're gonna be talking about Brian's goals later, so I would say maybe we would wanna reserve any questions about that. We might wanna just gonna hold off, because I think there's gonna be some overlap of, you know, like what you're providing and just some conversation pieces, if that's okay with everyone. Um, okay, great, and then we can talk about like planning for, as well for future stuff, but um that's, that's what I have, Mauro, I'll pivot to you.
Um, my only real question is about your stay interviews. Um, you said that you, you, so you actually go to each school, and where, where do you set up?
Yep, so at the high school, I set up in, uh, I'll describe it, cause I don't think A two O two will tell you anything. Um, it's on the second floor. It is, if you go in the entrance by the gymnasium, and you go up the stairs, that's where.
Um.
What guidance counselors?
The guidance and oasis, so there's a room in the corner next to uh Dana, that's.
Yeah.
Got different uses, but they reserve it for me for the couple hours a day that I ask for it. And then at Fowler, it's in my office, um, cause they don't have, necessarily have a lot of extra room, and at Green Meadow. Um, I'll let you know when Karen tells me what space she's giving me.
Great, thank you. I'm super excited that you're doing this again. Um, I think it's really awesome and a great way for you to. To really um get to know the, the staff.
Um, agreed.
So.
And even the new, the new staff as well, like, that's a really great tone for, um, so yeah, very much time well spent. Uh, Mary?
Yeah, no, thank you. Um, so first with Green Meadow, so a couple of weeks ago, the Ed Foundation, we, we had the coffee truck set up. So I took advantage of walking when we were at Green Meadow to walk all the way around the building.
Oh, good.
Everybody should do it. It is quite impressive. It really, it's, it's very, very cool, and, and the new layout to get them. Into the back there, yeah, um, that was brilliant, cause I don't know why we didn't do that at the beginning, but it's really, that was a really, really positive change, so.
Might go tomorrow.
Yeah, you really should. It, it takes you five minutes, and you can walk all the way around it. There is, you know, um, and so you, you can definitely do the walkway. Cause I wasn't positive of that, but you can, so I would strongly recommend it. Um, and as far as the stay interviews go, I am also thrilled that you're doing this. My, my first question is, did you get a lot of repeat business? A lot of people that had done it the first time that, that felt comfortable enough to come back, or do you find yourself getting new, a lot of new people?
Um. Both, so there definitely repeats, people that I talked to the first time, and, and absolutely new people.
Great, excellent. So obviously, the, the repeats felt comfortable that, you know, that they could talk to you, cause.
Yeah.
You could be intimate, you, not you personally, but the position.
I get it.
Never a friendly superintendent, it's you, Brian, so.
What is the idea, the idea, right?
Compliment, it's a huge compliment, but um, and um, when, so when changes were, when any changes were made. And I kinda forget about this piece, did, did you report back to the staff to say, you know, these are the things that came up? And these are the changes we're being, I know we talked about it, but I didn't.
Yeah.
You went back.
Yeah, so I sent a memo to the staff, like, for example, one of them had to do with communication. And that may have been a district one, so I sort of do district and then per building. Um, so I'll talk about my, like, the district one, cause that's me, right? Um, so we talked about communication, so then like, one of the things that I would do is make sure that I'm sending a weekly. Um, smores out to the community, which also goes to all the staff. Um, also, my memo, my weekly Thursday memo to you also goes to the entire leadership team, so there's.
Good, that they saw, they saw that it was worth, um, you know.
Yeah, like I could identify, they identified communication, and then I said, okay, how can I do that differently? I thought it was going okay, but it, it wasn't, needs to be better, needs to be different. So then that was the action plan, and then that seems to have uh improved that, cause that hasn't come up this year.
Perfect, alright, thank you very much. That's it. That's everything I've got.
Mauro, can you hold off until I go back? Oh, I guess, um, Alexis?
Nope, I don't have any questions at the moment.
Okay, alright, uh Hillary? Oh, she might be, I think she's muted. Hillary, oh, she got muted again. Okay, so we're.
He can unmute herself, she's cool.
Okay. Is Hillary, um?
Hi, my internet is being really cranky.
Okay, did you have any questions?
Um, no. Question, I just wanted to comment on this, the interviews, because um, I had, after you had done it last time, I brought it up at my work. And talked about how fabulous it sounded, and every single person said they would never in a million years participate, and. They wouldn't feel comfortable, and that made me so shocked at, and impressed by the environment you created with the staff, that they do feel comfortable. Um, and, you know, we have a running list at my work to give to the next person who quits to share in her exit interview. And it's great that you can get that feedback now, um, but I, I mostly just thought it was like a really great reflection on how comfortable. The environment is that you've created.
Thank you. We work at it. I work at it. Everybody works at it.
Yeah, you're successful.
Sorry. Hillary, did you have something? Oh, okay, alright, sorry, sorry if I missed it, Hillary, I didn't mean to cut you off. Mauro?
Um, yeah, I, I ended up having, I forgot that I had a question about the Green Meadow. Um, have they? I don't know where in the process, uh, the whole thing of like, even just like the design of like. The outside, like what it's gonna look like, colors or whatever. It, whether or not that has already been decided, or when that is gonna be decided?
So those conversations have definitely started. I don't think anything's set in stone yet. Um, but they've flushed out a couple of different versions of colors of brick and whatnot. I'll check with Phil and Chris tomorrow. On timeline and figure out where we are exactly in that process and forward, and share that with you all.
Okay, so who, who, I'm assuming that the um, the Green Meadow Building Committee are the final say on what it looks like?
Yeah, they would be the, I think they're the voting body.
Okay.
Yep.
Do we get to see the options?
Absolutely. I mean, they're, they're very similar, but I'll have Phil send them over in a format that I can share them, cause he normally screen shares, screen, yeah. Screen shares, um, I guess to get him to send it in a way that we can all open it easily.
Right, great, thank you.
No problem.
Um, and just following up on, on two things about the Green Meadow, one is. Um, I think we will need just to kind of put a pencil in a follow up executive session, right? From our conversations before, um, that we had recently, so. Brian, I, I think there were some questions the school committee had, and there was some follow up needed, so maybe um just coordinate on. When we might be able to schedule that before final decisions are made around those discussions. Um, that would be.
On safety, right?
Yes, they were all.
What we're talking about, okay.
Yes, exactly, exactly. Um, there was a lot of, those were the safety aspects, and then um. And then the other part too, as you're following up with Phil about the, you know, the design specs and what. It'd be great if we can get some rendering, um, maybe bef- like by January. Yes, exactly, um, just because also that's when the town gets hit with their tax bill or part of it. So it'd be nice to show, um, like, hey, this is what you're, we're getting, you know, so kind of. Like, remind of the, the positive of what that investment is, that they're gonna start feeling. In their January, part of it in their January tax bill, um, so that would be helpful, just to kind of.
Okay.
Think about that, and we can maybe, you know, so if that's possible, I don't know if it'll get to a place where that's that ready, but um. Just a thought, a thought process, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
As a follow up, it'd be kinda cool if, and I'm not sure where we could display this, but now that we've got um banners. You know, we, we had the, the alumni field one, maybe we replace one near Green Meadow with a picture of. A rendering of it at some point, that would be kind of fun.
Yeah, like coming, yeah, twenty twenty eight or whatever, you know.
It'd be very fun for people to actually see it.
Yeah, yeah, cause people, yeah, I, I think it would be. You don't have to go to a website, just something that's just there to.
And yeah, there's, yeah, right by Crow Park there, there's that fence area that, that could actually be hung against.
Like that idea, Mary. Okay, alright, um Alexis, did I? Catch you for, yeah, I did, okay.
Yep, you did.
Sure, okay. Wonderful, everybody kinda moved around on my screen, and it disorients me a little bit, like, did I get you, did I not, okay? Alright, so um, now we are, oh, oh, hold on. Just lost my Quebec trip agenda. Yes, here we go, uh, the Quebec trip. And is this, uh, so, uh, Mr. Trudeau, this is, I'm guessing, you?
Yes, it is.
Alright, welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Good evening. So I'm gonna share my screen here. Alright, it seems to be working. Can everyone see that blue screen there?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Well, thanks for having me. I'm here to propose a field trip to Quebec City. Alright, uh, I teach French at Maynard High School and Spanish sometimes, uh, but mostly French. And I'm gonna tell you the details of the trip, and then if you have any questions after, I'll be happy to answer those. So the proposed dates are there, it's a Friday to Monday trip, it's a four day trip. So, uh, that's not during February vacation or anything, but it's before that, so students would miss Friday and Monday. Of classes. Uh, here's some key information about it, there's the dates again, uh. The proposed dates are during the Winter Carnival Celebration, which is really a fun celebration in Quebec City. They actually. They, you know, if any places knows how to do winter and celebrate it, it's Quebec, and it's really a fun time. Uh, so that, that's the opening weekend uh of that Winter Carnival. Uh, we'll, I'll talk more about the activities uh coming up. Uh, more key information, the cost. Approximately, that, that's a big number, one thousand three hundred twenty nine dollars per student, but. It includes almost everything, uh, so includes transportation, lodging, all the activities. Two meals per day, and usually one of those meals is like buffet or like all you can eat style, so. They could, if they didn't wanna spend money on the, you know, their optional meal, they could actually even have that, you know, just the two, and they would be fine. Um, also, there's insurance options available, and so if, you know, people feel like, okay, I might. Cancel, or you know what, I just wanna be sure, they could, they could purchase the insurance uh for it, so. Uh, that's the price, alright, uh, documentation requirements. So adults and anyone traveling by plane, as you know, going to Canada has to have a passport. There, there is one exception. Uh, and it's any student group going by bus, going by land over the border, they don't actually have to have a passport. I mean, if they have it, it's great, uh, but they can use a birth certificate and a student ID. Uh, but that's only with, it's kind of like an exception actually for, for this kind of trip, which is good, because uh passports can be. Expensive, and sometimes they take a long time to process them, but uh they can. Use their birth certificate and a student ID, so that's nice. Here's some photos from previous trips. Alright, there's a photo of me and Ms. Tigerwald, she's the other chaperone. Uh, on that particular trip, we went to a, a wood carving museum. I don't think that's on the agenda for this coming one, but that was kind of fun. Uh, the photo on the right there, you see, it's a historical presentation and a reenactment, actually. Of um, the Battle of Quebec, right, when the, when the French lost Quebec to the British. And they give a really great presentation, and it's interactive, and, and really the students love it, but that's one of the highlights. Uh. You can see how cold it was there. Sometimes people ask, is that Celsius or Fahrenheit? Well, at that point, it actually doesn't matter, because they end up being about the same. Uh, that was the day uh that we got there last, last time. Uh, and we felt like, oh, it's alright, cause it's sunny, but then you step outside and you realize, no, it's, it's extreme. it's extreme and um you have, you know, obviously we make sure that the students are prepared for that. I even bring extra things, extra scarves, extra hand warmers, everything because it is, you know, that's is an actual danger of this trip. You can't have, there's times when you can't have exposed skin, you know, because it is so cold, but we're you know, the Canadians obviously know how to deal with that. We're very aware of that. The guides that they provide us with have consistently been phenomenal with this tour operator. Uh, and that is one like first in their mind is is everyone safe, you know, so they're very aware of that. As are we. Uh, but generally, it's a really great time. Aside from the cold, I think actually the cold makes it more memorable because it's so cold, it might actually be the coldest that that these kids ever experienced in their lives. And it's like, oh, that's adding to this memory here and you can see in that photo on the right there, that's the mascot of the festival. There's people out and about and you know, you see Canadians pulling their kids along with their sleds and they're just enjoying themselves and it's it's really great because they get to see a cultural difference, you know, here when it's that cold, people just kind of stay inside and they're miserable. But in Canada, in Quebec at least, you know, people are still out and about and doing things and uh they get to experience that, which is which is great. Uh, there's a few other photos from some previous trips. I'm going to show you also uh the itinerary. That's not it. This is it. So this uh this list basically everything and I'm not going to read through the whole document here, but I think it's part of the record that you'll you'll see. Uh, but the takeaway from this and this particular tour operator, they think of everything. Uh, all of these activities are really great for high school students. It's geared toward French students, uh but actually the trip is open to any student now because uh we need twenty people and I have just about twenty, so. But they they are great because they understand like what's appropriate for that level. They understand, you know, what's appropriate linguistically, culturally, you know, and just like what what makes sense or, you know, what's what's fun. So there's many, many different activities. Uh, they even provide us with a hall monitor at the hotel, which is great because then the chaperones, Ms. Stierwald and I can actually sleep during the trip and we don't have to worry about, you know, kids running down the hall or whatever. So uh they it's a really great organization. It's a great trip and I fully endorse it and hope you do too. Do you have any questions?
Uh, well, thank you very much. I'm gonna go around to all the the school committee members and see if anyone has any additional questions. And then I think um at the end, we'll we'll need be we'll be voting on this um as well. Correct. Okay. Um, so uh Mauro, I'll start with you.
I'm fully on board with this. I think it's fantastic. Um, my exchange student um to well, a year and a half ago uh went and she had an absolutely fantastic time. And yes, it was so, so cold. Um, that was during our really cold time, and so it was even colder there, but she had a great time. She definitely bundled up. Um, I think one of the things got canceled, but maybe it got re um rescheduled or something. Um, but yeah, she had a great time, so I'm fully on board with this. So thank you.
Thank you.
Alexis?
I do have a couple of questions and it sounds like a ton of fun. Do you need other chaperones? Uh, I'd love to see the underground city. Uh, so my two questions are, you said it's twenty students um to participate. How are the students selected? Do they self select or is it do you just sort of put it out there for the French students who who possibly want to attend?
Yeah.
Or a certain level of French um so that they can use their French skills while they're there?
Yeah.
And then my other question has to do with financial support for students. So
Sure.
Um, that is a big, a large amount of money um and can be slightly off putting um for some families who might want their children to attend but don't have the means to do it. So I was wondering if there is funding in place to help support those students.
Yes, so the first question is uh originally it was just open to French students, just French students, but then I really didn't get twenty, which we need twenty to run the trip. Um, so it is open to anyone actually now who wants to go. It's geared toward French students because you know, that's a big part of it is the linguistic aspect, but it is open to anyone just so that we can get um the twenty. As far as uh financial support, uh there isn't funding in place per se, but I've had conversations with students and a parent or two and, you know, parent would email me for example, saying, look, I really want my son or daughter to go, but dot, dot, dot. And the answer is the answer that I give them is we will find a way, all right, that we can do fundraising. We can, we can figure it out uh and and we will uh because there are some students who you know, have gotten to, you know, a medium or almost advanced level in French and may, you know, maybe they're they can't afford it or or who knows what. But yeah, if you know, they are serious and want to go and, you know, feel like, okay, money might be a problem, we we can figure it out. We can do fundraising. We can, you know, if even if I I'm not going to encourage this, if if the price seems too high for everyone else, I've already actually kind of got them to decrease the price already a bit. They can take out certain activities, but I wouldn't want to suggest that. But the other thing is if we get more, if we get twenty, twenty-five, thirty, then the price does go down actually. So so that's that's even better. So I just kind of I lead with the with the higher price because I've learned from experience in past. Well, this is probably six or more years ago where if, you know, you give the estimate thinking you're going to have a certain number of students and then the price goes up, everybody hates that. So uh I just lead with that price and that's probably the most that anyone would would pay for this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Brian or Liz, is there any money in the budget to help these students if need be?
There is a little bit in the budget this year.
Okay.
It's good to know. Thank you.
Don't get too excited.
I'm realistic.
Meeting's recorded, so remember that.
As I said, we have some. I I see Wayne perked up and every.
Wayne shaking his head.
Wayne, you're shaking it the wrong way. Get back on track.
Uh, Mary?
Yeah, um, can you just sort of break down um the different age brackets since, you know, you've opened it up to everybody? Um, how many at each each one of the grade levels are going?
Yeah, it's uh it's pretty varied. I'd say mostly right now it's like ninth and tenth heavy. My seniors, which I really encouraged them to go, most of them went two years ago already, so they they're also going to Disney and I think there's another, there's a trip to Ireland, so they're kind of maxed out, I think, with their travel budgets and plus they've done this trip already. Right, exactly. And they've done this trip already, so they they don't necessarily want to, uh, which is too bad. I'm like, well, it's a great time, but I understand this. There's other trips and, you know, I get it. So mostly nine, ten, ninth and tenth.
All right. And when is um when's the drop dead? Like, when do you have to have the commitment of how many students?
Um, they're pretty flexible. I, you know, within a couple of weeks, I've been in contact with the with my representative and um they, we've gone with them a few times now and they're very flexible with us actually. So I would say within a few weeks, we should be able to tell them a definite yes. And actually, I've already done, I do like an interest slip that I give to the students and their parents. It's not a permission slip or anything like that, but at least I know that the parents have actually seen the amount in writing and the itinerary and the dates so that they, you know, I, you know, the students can be realistic about it because as we know, sometimes students don't have a firm grasp on like money and how much things cost and things like that, so.
Especially if other people are paying for it.
Right.
I know. And um how are you getting the word out, James? I mean.
Any way I can.
Yeah, I was gonna say it'd be great if Liz could put it in us some more now that you've opened it up to, you know, if you want to go that route.
Yeah, it it might be already. I think I know she's included in other communications and, you know, email announcements and things are all over the place, so.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you. No, I'm very excited about it. I think it sounds phenomenal.
It's a great trip.
Well.
Thank you.
I feel like, oh, Hillary. Can you, is your audio working? Okay, or your internet, are you able to? Hillary, maybe not. Okay, I'll circle back. Did I get everyone else? Mauro, yes, Alexis. Mauro, did I go to you? Yes, right. Okay, and Mary. Thank you. I have two, three questions maybe for you if I could. One, uh, first, you indicated about the insurance being optional uh or options were available. Is that number, the thirteen, twenty-nine, when that's does not include insurance, right? So so parents, is it kind of like on a case on an individual basis, I'm guessing? Families can opt in?
Yes.
But it's not like the trip itself. So I guess my question is if um there's like a weather, you know, because it's winter in New England and whatnot, and it it's not, you know, the conditions are terrible. What what happens if we're, you know, just they're not able to travel at that time? Is the trip refunded or is that really forego the monies?
It does. Unless you have the insurance, yeah, you would, you would lose it. However, I will say they make every every effort to have to to run it, even if it's kind of modified or like Ms. Hogan was mentioning, a couple of years ago, there was extreme cold one morning and they had to it cancel an event in the morning, but they actually just ended up doing it in the afternoon. So we didn't really miss much. And I mean, that's a minor example. Another big example, which was two times ago, I think it was, but it was four years ago. We went up and it was during a blizzard, believe it or not, and uh we knew about it. I, you know, I was watching the forecast I always do before we leave. And I had talked to the bus operator, made sure he was all right with it and you know, we made the decision to go and then it got particularly bad on the road up there. I don't know if people remember this, but uh this tour operator was was great and they knew about it too. And they called, we were in the in between the border and Quebec City. And the tour operator, the representative called me and said, look, uh, we know that it's the roads are really bad right now. If you guys want to stay, stop, you can stay at this hotel over here. It wasn't in Quebec City. It was still hours away. But they knew that was the safest thing to do. So we actually, we did that. And we didn't lose any money or anything like that. They they coordinated it and it was fine. Actually, we had a pretty memorable evening that night. We went to a different restaurant and and we had a good time. So in a nutshell, uh, they make every effort to hold, to do the trip. I I can't, I mean, I don't want to jinx anything, but I don't imagine that that it would be canceled outright, like that that'd be very rare.
I guess what I would want to make sure is that um given the the season, right? So it's it's winter. And, you know, it's going for the north. I would want that not to only rest on your shoulders where you feel like, you know, that's a lot for you to care, like you're not, you're the one, if that decision maker about go, not go, if circumstances are are dire that, you know, that what is that? People are considering really not just the loss of of funds, like it's really like, you know, pray, and if they have insurance. So maybe that would be like the communication to families is like, hey, look, you know, safety obviously is going to be the forefront of this is the risk if the trip is canceled. You know, so it is strongly suggested that you you get insurance. Um, I don't know what that cost is, but I just think that um, I don't, I wouldn't want, I don't know if you're the only person who would be involved in that decision um to cancel or not. I just you know, want to make sure that that isn't something that solely falls on your shoulder and that's, you know, fifteen hundred dollars is not an easy thing to swallow for a family, but safety obviously is is what we.
I have heard of actually situations now that I'm thinking about it. Um, this is like pandemic actually when it happened, but what companies did then um was that they uh even for those people that didn't have insurance, this is other districts, other trips. Um, when things were canceled for the pandemic, they just held that money as a credit towards future trips. So um I know that that's something that could be done.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that that's 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 helpful as well. Um, and uh two other questions. So one um, I I heard that you were saying that you're looking outside of the French class to do that. I don't know. Looking at the requirement for the documentation, so it says a birth certificate and or passport. Does that birth certificate have to mean a US birth certificate? So if there are students who potentially are not native speakers, but maybe they speak French, like if they're, you know, Creole or something to that effect, I don't know if that opportunity to go uh on that trip might be beneficial. Um, if it would be open to them to make sure they wouldn't be included.
It's open to any anyone that can legally enter Canada and legally return to the United States. So
Okay.
Uh, but the birth certificate, like the exemption is for US citizens.
Okay.
So if someone's a citizen of another country, then yeah, I I do need to know that and they have to have a passport. Yeah.
Okay, all right. So potentially if someone is, you know, from a country that speaks maybe a French and they aren't in your French class per se, but um, they would also be.
I run through that with every student that's interested and I make sure that we we have all the correct documentation before.
Right. Thank you so much. And um and then I think the last thing is really just about you know, um, health wise, because I recall, there's not like a nurse traveling in this particular trip, right? So in the event someone falls ill, what can you just remind the school committee what the protocol would be? So if someone needs to come back home?
Yeah, we could, we could arrange that absolutely if if need be. I mean, God forbid that, that's probably the worst case scenario, but Canada has an excellent healthcare system and they might actually end up paying less in Canada than than here. I don't know. I don't know that for a fact, uh, but um we do have two chaperones, so you know theoretically a- and there's a guide provided by the tour operator. So theoretically, if someone had to come back, we could find a way to do that. Yeah.
Well, it was great. It was great that to remind that you guys have, you know, chaperones in addition to, you know, you all going. So in the event, one of you has to come, there's still people there to support the other members out there. So, right, um, I think that's, um, Hillary, did I see? Oh, nope. She came and she went. I thought I saw Hillary for a moment.
She said she keeps getting bumped out.
Okay, all right. So I if if I don't, I don't have any other questions. I don't know if anyone else does. Um, okay, um, so I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the Maynard High School trip to Quebec from February seventh to February tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, um, roll call, Alexis?
Yes.
Mauro?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Natasha? Yes. And then um Hillary is got kicked out, so she is not on. So Colleen, can you just make a note like at seven fifty-five, Hillary? Maybe needed to sign off. I don't know if it's temporary, but I'm assuming it might be. And so she was not available for the vote. All right, motion up. There we go. Oh. Well, she missed it. Motion. Harry's.
She's in the waiting room.
This is giving me the option to admit her. I don't know if um
Oh, go for it. There you go.
I don't know. Be careful. I don't know. You get admit the wrong person and all of a sudden we get Zoom bomb. We got.
It went away. Yeah, it went away.
Hey, Hillary. Hey Hillary, um, we, we just voted, um, so hopefully um, you're okay. Trip, but I, I wanted to just give you a quick opportunity to um, ask any questions before we moved on to the next agenda. Item, I don't, but look, you need to be unmuted.
And Liz also has her hand up, just so that you know that.
Liz, yeah, oh, good. Liz, I see you, I will get you next.
Hi, sorry about that, my internet just keeps shutting off. Um, I totally love the trip. Um, I did the same trip in high school and it was a lot of fun. Um. I did think I could go with a sweatshirt and not a jacket and that was wrong. Um, but I'm really excited about the trip. I do, I am concerned about, um, I feel really strongly that. Schools should be accessible, public schools should be accessible to everybody and everybody should be able to be included. And I know um, parents have posted on town Facebook pages and emailed me about their concerns that they can't afford it. And that when they asked um, about financial resources, it didn't seem like there were any. Um, is there, now that it seems like there are, is there a way to reach back out to parents or share that somehow? So the parents who have been telling their kids they can't go, um, maybe could start having more discussions about it.
I mean, that's a possibility. I would have to know exactly like how much in order to give them that exact amount. But it is possible if, and, and if I can get that amount, then sure, absolutely.
Um, maybe uh, Brian, I don't know if you and Wayne or can just circle back with. If there's, if there's what amount of funding that might be for financial support if there's so need or.
Yeah, I haven't heard that there's actually a need at this point yet, so why don't you find out if there is? And then I can circle back with Wayne next week and we can um, see what the, what the actual need is and how we can possibly fund it.
Right, and Liz, I, I saw that you had your hand up earlier, so I don't want to um.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you very much. This trip very much benefits our French students and all students.
Awesome.
You're welcome.
Wonderful. Um, great, so thank you so much for everything. Uh, have fun planning. I hope everyone who wants to go is able to go. And really finds the excitement in, in planning and going towards impacts, apparently coats and lots of lots. Layers uh, there. And again, I would just want to emphasize, just maybe me being the worry wart is just strongly encouraged if they can. To just, you know, I don't know how much the insurance is, but that um, you know, that could be a thing. And I don't want to jinx the trip either, so not going wood, but thank you so much. You have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, thanks for having me. Thank you very much.
Alright. So now um, grants to approve. And Brian, will this be? You?
Yeah, I mean, you guys.
Yeah.
You guys have read them all. Um, they've been in the folder, so they're really. I can tell you, I mean, and you can see what they are. There's the IDEA Fund Code two forty, which is.
The special education, just to clarify, right? These are just the standard entitlement grants that we're talking about, so.
No, that one is. Some of them are, some of them aren't. So like that one is the entitlement, early childhood sped, also Fund Code two sixty-two. Uh, but then these are ones that we, the next three are ones we've applied for the Innovation Career Pathway Implementation. Fund Code four nineteen and Innovation Career Pathway Planning Grant, Fund Code four thirty-six. And then the Middle School Partnership Grant, which we've done in the past on my cap, um, Fund Code four two four. And you can see the dollar amounts on there and how the money is going to be spent.
Okay, um, just from a housekeeping perspective, just as I'm, for the warrant, I mean, for. Motion, are these all going to be go to Instruction Cost Center?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. So it would be, I think that's what most of these end up going to, but I didn't want to assume. So when we go through and approve and allocate or accept and allocate.
Well, except for the first one, to be honest, because that one has contracted services and not a district tuition costs, so I don't.
Okay, Wayne, do you have any particular? Suggestions on? Those where cost centers they would go to?
Allocate a grant to cost centers like we do the operational budget?
Yeah, I normally would put these into the instructional, um, but when Brian was mentioning about. One has like wages or ones related to wages. So is there a different cost center for that one?
But one could argue that those contracted services are going to support the instruction.
Okay, that makes sense. So what you said I would do.
Okay, so, so to keep it simple, just we'll do the instruction. Um, got it. Alright, um, let me just go around to all the school committee members to see if anyone has any questions or comments, um, Morrow?
I do not, but I'm super excited about the, the money that we're getting for these. Thank you for whomever.
And really, I, it's definitely a team effort depending on which grant you're looking at, but to your point, and I'm glad you mentioned that. The high school should get a lot of credit for the innovation career pathways grants and. High school and follow for the middle school partnership grant, um, more follower on that. And Heather, um, in terms of special education and director student services for IDEA and early childhood sped. So it's definitely a team effort and then on the backend, I mean, there's the business office and everybody working to really track the grants. To make sure that we're using them appropriately and timely. Good point.
Okay, um, Mary?
Yeah, just for clarification, Brian, so the, the one for the implementation is for the computer science and the one for. Planning is for DECA, is for the business pathway?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
And I will say for the implementation, the computer science market is very excited, Mr. Penopoli, I should say. Very excited about that, yes.
Um, Hillary, did I lose her?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Alright, um, I lost her. Uh, Alexis?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Um, just to reiterate, um, a kudos for the work in these competitive grants, the ones that are not. Um, I know there's a lot of work and then tracking. And I'm guessing this is kind of what you mentioned at the high school with the pathways, put a, you know, carry a significant effort in putting application. Does, these are ones that also that Charles kind of tracks during the year, this kind of fall in that collective grant. Uh, group that you guys meet regularly and.
Yeah, Charles, Chuck, Wayne.
Wonderful, and I will say it's been great, it's been great to see um, how little we ever really have to return. I know that the numbers I see like, um, you know, the department or Massachusetts Department of Revenue, I, I think the other day it was like forty bucks. I was like, you know, or whatever, it's really small dollars that we are not spending when we're trying to, to do this. So thank you for really maximizing as much as we can to, to spend um, to spend as much, so we're not having to return what we, any unspent monies. So just to clarify on the cost center, the one that is cost center two uh, two thousand. And, and it is for sped directors, staff, IT director, instructional staff, wages for principals, teachers, PD. So it kind of does, it has textbooks and instructional supplies. So it is that all, and I think it might, you know, kind of all encompass. That particular one. So I think that's the one we're going to be, we're saying is the right one to use. Let me go back to the summary page. Um, so I will make a motion that we accept and allocate, um, allocate. Um, the IDEA grant for three hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars. To fund two four zero, the Early Education Sped Fund two six two for eight thousand, one hundred. And thirty-two dollars, the Innovative Career Pathways Implementation Fund four one nine for seventy-five thousand dollars. And the Innovative Career Pathway Planning Grant Fund uh, four three six for fifteen thousand dollars. And the Middle School Partnership Grant Fund uh, code four two four for twenty-four thousand dollars. And allocate all to cost center two thousand.
Second.
Um, any further questions or discussion? Okay, um, Colleen, if you can make note that Hillary is still, so she will be absent for this vote um, as well. So Mary?
Yes, and I'm grateful for all the work that has gone into this as well as all the other grants we apply for.
Yes, yes, for all the ones that we, we get, there's like ten behind the scenes that are not granted, which still require a lot of work. So thank you very much. Uh, Alexis?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Um, and Hillary's still not back, so Natasha, yes. So the motion carries, thank you very, very much. On that. And then we are now moving on. Uh, oops, to the update for the bleacher project update. So I, I mentioned to Brian, I think we're just going to be kind of keeping this on the agenda for a little bit. Because there's, you know, now that things are needing to take a pivot, um, there just might be some brief updates at each meeting. Uh, coming forward, not necessarily decision-making, but just to keep everyone abreast of, of everything. So I know that Brian had shared today um, some information. That we'll put on the school committee agenda next time about different options for the school committee to consider. So about um, different scenarios. So Brian, thank you for you and Mike and the team really to. I know this was a really hard pivot for everybody to, to consider and, and Liz as well, um, you know, but kind of realizing. Now we got to move away, you know, start planning a, a life without bleachers right now. So we will, um, I think the next steps will be, we will um, take this up at our next meeting, which will be on the seventh. It'll be remote also, um, because Colleen will be away and then the meeting after that will be in per, or will be hybrid. So we'll do the twenty-first will be um, in person or hybrid, whoever can make that. But we'll vote on what the school committee option we would like to pursue. And then we will use that to inform our peer um, boards of what path we're, you know. So the quad board meeting or whatever, like this is what we're, this is what the school, we've come together on. We're obviously going to need um, you know, funding for some of this, right? This is not including like um, you know, we're, how to, how to cost this out. Mary and I attended and Wayne and Brian last night, the town budget subcommittee meeting. And we discussed looking at um, Greg is going to go back and look at the original lines. That were allocated for rental, for free cash. And we believe that there was, it may have been vague enough where we might be able to utilize some of those funds. Whatever's remaining, since we're not going to be renting to um, put towards demo. So that's potentially one funding source. Uh, we also will be talking about it at the quad board meeting. Because this will be a town decision on what to do. It might be that we need to go to FinCom. Um, to look for um, a funding source there. I think the other part two is we may need to put it out at our, we don't know even, I think the last thing we've gotten information is the fifty thousand dollars. I don't know if that was kind of a, you know, back of the napkin kind of, you know, making some calls. I, I haven't seen an estimate that way. So Greg was going to circle back to Justin to see if there's actually um, some estimates that are, are ground and, and solid numbers. That we can base it on um, before we are proceeding, so. That's, I think, really it at this point for the bleachers. Um, Mary, I don't know if you had any other questions or thoughts or something to share. Um, in addition, so really just kind of putting a finer point on it after football season. Um, this will be, there, there'll be no more rentals.
We basically brought that up last night at the budget subcommittee meeting too, especially if we're going to be looking at a potential override. Operating override in the spring, we can't justify spending money on the bleachers anymore, so.
Yeah, so I think this is, obviously we'll have more and, and when there's more momentum with other projects. One thing that I thought was. Because it came up during our conversations or the community members brought it up when they were advocating, you know, maybe not against the bleachers. But maybe um, prioritizing other needs in the town. One of the things that was important, I think, that I only got clarity about last night was the water and sewer infrastructure. So I, I think Maynard, we know that there's just a significant need of work that needs to be done, but um. My understanding was that maybe we need, we needed more money to do what was being done. Based on what we heard last night is they've built in the needs into the rates that are going to be increased. Like there's not, from what I heard last night, that there wasn't going to be this larger capital. Like request or, or whatever for, for water and sewer. So I, I think that was helpful for me context because it wasn't like the money that was um. This project wasn't going to take the money that was going to be used for, you know, water and sewer infrastructure. That is already been kind of like earmarked or out, you know, for a very designated source for the people who are your water, what you pay every month. So it's not um, it wasn't like an if or or, that's happening anyway. And I just thought that was helpful because it didn't sound like when people were commenting at town meeting. They're like, we need to spend all this money, like where we, you know, the three million dollars can be toward that. Well, actually, it's not. It would never be part, part of that because that's coming out of the enterprise funds for. Um, and I, I just wish there was some clarity on that beforehand because um, you know, we follow these projects so much. And I, and I don't feel like that was really known to the public. So we did ask, you know, since there's so many different projects, that needs to be one of them. That they educate the community a little bit more about, so people aren't in this fear of it's an unfunded effort for our water and sewer. It actually has already been, you know, monies are, like just they're raising the rates every year like they normally do, but it's already a plan in motion to fund. The water efforts, um, but for this, for the project, it wouldn't impact the bleachers in any way. Like it wouldn't be a project that would be done instead of, or you know, that kind of thing, which I think would, would be, was helpful to know.
I had, I had not heard that. There you go, sorry, Mara.
Uh, I had not heard that, so I'm, you know, that's great. I'm glad to hear that. But yeah, I think that we definitely, they definitely need to let, you know, the rest of the community know that that is already. And I, and I kind of feel like that was something that should have been brought up because that was, you know, the water sewer was brought, brought up. At the town meeting, but then nobody addressed that? That doesn't seem right.
Well, that's why I was confused when I was, because last night I was saying, you know, we're talking about all of our projects and, you know, planning for quad board meeting and. Um, and I was like the, we were talking about it, like the water wasn't even on, like they had bleacher and they had senior center. But the water and sewer was, and I was like, you know, everyone's expecting, like there's this big decisions that need to be made. And, and Greg was like, well, there's the enterprise funds and that's being paid. I was like, so they're not going to need to be? And he was, he was like, no, and I had Mary, I was like, I asked very clear, I was like, so we're not going to be needing to do this large capital override. For anything water related. He's like, no, they have the monies will be funded from, um, you know, whatever millions they've gotten already. Um, I did ask that they put together maybe a couple of slides for us at our quad board because I think exactly to that point. Maybe I made some assumptions, but probably because it's so dense material, they need to kind of dwindle it down. So the la, average, you know, Joe Q public can understand what is happening with their money. Um, and that there's not going to be this huge, maybe the rates will increase, you know, I'm guessing. But I don't know exponentially where it would be a project that would be up for an override kind of vote, which is what I was maybe thinking. That it would be like a, it was in competition with other capital projects that way, you know?
I was expecting that too.
Me too.
And was wondering why they hadn't actually been talking about, like, when is that going to happen? So, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll see. I don't know. That's what I, that's what I thought the takeaway was. Mary, please correct me if you heard anything different. You did, okay.
Yeah, and then the other piece that I just heard this week from somebody from CAPSCOM is that um, the town just received five, a five hundred thousand dollar grant. For sewer, for our sewer in, infrastructure. I was kind of surprised that that didn't come up last night. It just doesn't seem like, you know, that's pretty substantial, so.
Which is great. I mean, honestly, anything that decreases the rates that, you know. Which is great. I mean, honestly, anything that decreases the rates that, you know. So anyway, but for for bleachers, I think this is helpful for us. When when we hear people commenting about all the priorities in the town, I think. It just informs us to really say, well, the water and sewer is actually already being funded. So it's really not a project in competition with like needing funds, not already. Needing a funding source. It has a dedicated funding source that's already been planned and it will be phased in over time. So that's really all that I I had about the bleacher update. I think the next decisions will be, you know. The potential around what we want to decide if the scenarios and what impact that will be. Greg did mention last night. That any additional costs, we would have to build into our budget. So if we're looking to do rentals for. Anything, he said that would be more of an op- operational budget could be more long term and which to which we said, well, we don't have the money for that. You know, we're not gonna be, so I don't know, like W A B M, those kind of questions we may need to think about if it's programmatic and. That kind of stuff. So Brian, I don't know if you had any other, anything to add about the bleacher conversations.
Oh, that summarizes it well.
Okay, all right. And Liz, I know this, you know, obviously impacts the high school for. For graduations and I just, I don't know if the students have. Had they, this conversation, has it come up yet with the students or?
Yes, Mr. Maria came and met with the students the day after the vote. And the feeling is very, very strong among students that. We should move heaven and earth to have graduation outside. And, you know, the reality is that may not be fiscally possible or responsible. But that's hard to understand when you're seventeen or eighteen years.
I know. I know. It is, it is hard. I mean, believe me, I didn't. It is hard. If if it all helpful, I mean, when it, if it's up for a conversation, because I don't, you know, really think that you and. You know, Mike need to carry the the weight of the decision on your shoulders. Let us know how, like at a SAC meeting, you know. A school committee member can be there to kind of, you know, support, you know. Understand some of the, maybe after we make a vote. That might be something we we can think about.
I think they would welcome that.
Okay, yeah, it's, I think we're all very disappointed at this direction that. And, you know, I think ultimately the community needs to. Is really the ones who need to advocate more and show up for, so when it, when there is. You know, it's, we can only do so much on our own. So it definitely is gonna be more community act. Community work that's gonna have to drive this momentum. So the voice of the community really has to be the one to push this forward further. So. Get those parents out there. Write in some letters. I don't have anything else about bleacher updates or bleacher project. So I think we'll move on then, if that's okay, everyone. Did Hillary, did I see Hillary? Oh, yeah, Hillary. Did you have anything about, I don't, I honestly don't know what.
I'm okay. Most of this, but.
Oh, you did. Okay, good. Because I I actually, I didn't see when you had back. So, all right. Yeah, yeah, no worries. Okay, so then we will go ahead and 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 move on to the FY twenty-four year end financial report. And I will turn it over to Wayne. And Wayne, I think. Yeah, please highlight, you know, not line by line. Everyone has familiarity with the report. So I think if. I would take that approach. Assume everyone has read it. And just highlight the things that you think are the really most important to emphasize.
Well, I think the most important thing is we finished that budget. No, I mean. I mean, if you're you're sitting where Brian or I sit and you hear other districts, that's not necessarily the case. And also, it falls a little bit outside the window of this report, but the fact that we closed out Esser. Without that financial cliff that you hear in so many districts. That was the largest grant that this district has ever received. It was accepted, it was utilized. I think it provided a lot of advantages. To the district and in terms of its objective, which was to try to. Catch up those students that may have fallen behind as a result of the pandemic. We did that and no financial cliff. We are here in FY twenty-five and we are not. Hurting in terms of our instruction, what we're providing to our students as a result of that grant going away. So. I think a lot of credit goes to the grant team and the the teachers and the buildings, the people in the buildings. For utilizing tho- those funds and we used all of it. On time and in a manner such that I think we returned little if any money at all. So. That was no small feat. I think that, you know, again, all of you had an opportunity to read the report. I'll just say that. If you remember when we began the year, you know, again. We were authorized by you to spend more than what the town was going to fund and we were able to. Do that by, you know, supplementing with our revolving accounts and. And and utilizing grants to the best of our ability. And so that there was no reduction in force, like some districts have had to go through. There was no reduction in instruction. And I'm not an educator and maybe Brian or I guess Biz has dropped off. I think the instruction in Maynard is. Some of the best it's it's been. People work very hard to make make sure that's the case. And it's just my job to try and to make sure that the they have the finances that they need to be able to do that. And so that's what I consider my objective. I just wanted to point out a couple of graphs I put in there. One is about food service. You notice that how there's a significant increase in the numbers of meals that has been served in the district. And I don't know. You know, would you have thought if I had asked you the question that we have served a hundred and eighty thousand meals in this district?
I mean, you serve like, you know, two meals a day, three schools. So. Yeah, I mean, it's a lot when you think per person and multiple. And then also some of them get two meals, but. That's a lot.
And for the most part, you know, this goes off without a hitch. Our food service people are very good at taking care of the students. Making sure they get a good wholesome meal. I know Alexis, you knew, everybody else knows, but our food service program. Gets no funds from the operating budget in order to operate. The only way we're able to operate is the. The reimbursements we get from the numbers of reimbursable meals that we serve. And the key word here is reimbursable. There has to be certain components in the meal in order to make it reimbursable. If it doesn't have it, we don't get paid for it. And so, you know, so far we have been able to successfully fund. The operation of the food service program and have not run a deficit. Again, in many other districts that I talk to my colleagues, that is a big problem. So the other thing in the in the in the charts is, you know, the meal growth percent. Year over year, breakfast is gone up over twenty-four percent. Lunch has gone up over six percent. I don't have to tell you, you've heard the same thing I have, that kids learn better if they're not hungry. So from that standpoint, I think we are. Doing a good job in terms of that. And that's, you know, again, finishing at budget in this year where we had to make up a substantial. Funding shortfall between what we are authorizing, we did increasing, you know. You know, feeding our students and doing it in an efficient way and closing out Esser. Without any financial or negative financial impact to the district, I would have to say are kind of highlights and. I I open it up to any of your questions that you may have.
I'll I'll have, I'll start first and then I'll go around. The, thank you very much. I know this is a huge, huge, this is one of the the biggest reports that we get. For from you because it's kind of giving a, the end of the year, plus you're also doing the end of the year closing at the same time. And really gives us a really good overview of of how the year went fiscally. And how close on target we were with doing that. So tremendous, tremendous thanks to you and your team. For all the work to get us where we are to. You know, not be in the red and really still being able to. Maximize every dollar we can in in service of our our students and our community. A few things I just wanted to ask about the. The circuit breaker numbers. I I appreciate the diligence and making sure that that two-year look back is really kind of. Systematic and embedded now is really part of your your process. The one thing that I. See is a really stark concern is that the reimbursement rate for has gone down. From what I, am I, if I'm reading this for, so the reimbursement for for what we got for for twenty-four. Is is decreasing. And so we're getting less from that. Is that potentially a reduction? Because I know certain automated enrollments. Were happening. So could this be a result of that? I remember there was some some things where there's students who are certain needs were automatically enrolled. Enrolled in programs like from COVID and the pandemic. And then that, some of those automated enrollments stopped. I don't know if there's a correlation there, that this might be the result where we're seeing less claims and stuff because of some of those things that. Could that potentially be it?
It 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 could, but when I spoke to Rhonda and Heather. As you know, circuit breaker is always a year behind.
Right.
So. The the reimbursement that we're getting for FY twenty-five is from. FY twenty-four.
Right.
Well, when in talking to the special education department, what I found out is there was a student. Who was in a residential program that was costing over two hundred and twenty, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. That aged out in twenty-three. So his money or her, I don't know. His or her money would have been in twenty-four reimbursement that I got. But since that person was not on the rolls in twenty-four, it would not show up in the twenty-five reimbursement. So therefore, it would negatively impact the reimbursement. You get the twenty-five, which will make it lower.
So do they have to be, just following that thought, is it an age restriction as well as far as when you say age out? So I just know that like students can be on an IEP, they could be in there till they're twenty, you know, twenty-one potentially. And because there's that transition period, sometimes they might be deemed eligible. But are you saying that the Medicaid reimbursement is really only up until like up until eighteen? So really. Is that the, is that the cutoff for eligibility for the the student? The circuit breaker, sorry. The circuit breaker re- reimbursement is only about, so we would be potentially expending on. Eighteen to twenty-one year olds, but those are not deemed eligible for reimbursement for through circuit breaker?
Has the Fed Department, what what that age was when they said the person aged out, I didn't ask them whether that was eighteen or twenty-one.
It would be good to get that clarity for us. Well, because we're gonna be meeting with Kate and Jamie. So if there is, I mean. Colleen, I see her, maybe she has some.
The age is twenty-two. Once a student reaches the age of twenty-two, the district is no longer responsible for education. So this particular student became, was in a resident. Twenty-two. So once he became twenty-two.
Got it.
Paying tuition.
Okay. So once it became twenty-two, even though they were still in a facility. Okay, well, that's still kind of, it seems. I think it's a point worth raising if they're still in the care of. Education. But that's, thank you for clarifying that.
I'm confused about what what part, what you just said.
About the, so the the circuit breaker, what the eligible expenses that we can get reimbursed for are only up until they're twenty-one.
Twenty-two.
They know twenty-two is when they age out.
Yeah, like up through, up until they turn twenty-two.
Wait, up until they twenty-two, right. So the, there was a particular student who was still in a, in a, you know, I guess to getting support. And turned twenty-two. And so therefore, the expenses associated with that student were no longer, we're not eligible for reimbursement.
But we aren't paying those expenses anymore.
Exactly.
So like, we shouldn't be getting, like, if we're not the ones paying it, we can't get reimbursement, right?
Right. Okay, so I, I don't know.
Department of Mental Health or DDS would be paying for it.
Correct. So then, then what is the drop in, that's what I I was kind of trying to understand then. So the drop in what we're seeing.
For that per, that person.
Oh, so we don't have the expense for it either.
Right.
Okay, thank you. I just needed somebody to connect the dots for me there. Thank you. There was no expense for us that we're incurring. Thank you very much. Ah, it's a long day. Okay. Glad everyone got that except for me. And then I had one other question for you, Wayne, about. School choice, the lunch. Where did I note that? Oh, the re, the, the accounts that we were talking about. The foreign exchange revolving account. I just wanted to get clarification on this one because I believe this is the one where. I believe. Could be used for some of those. You know, thinking about what we had earlier. So if there's kids we're hosting, but is it expenses paid generally related to supporting exchange activities? Pay for school related fees and exchange students. Would this also potentially support when there's, when students are going abroad? Okay, I thought, okay. Though, is there a certain amount from this? Fund that we budget, like we're gonna expense up to this percentage, you know, every year or something. Like, okay, that would, that's what I'm wondering is that, because we hear some of these programs, I didn't know if they. I'm sorry, what were you saying?
No, I was gonna say you don't budget out of revolving accounts. Revolving accounts are there. In this case, for expenses as they arise, that may not be covered or that are more appropriate. For this account to cover expenses as they arise. So. Historically, you don't kind of budget for them. You spend as needed.
Well, when I say budget, I mean. You spend as needed, but then you would cap it at a certain amount, right? Because the whole idea is that the fund would be, you'd want the fund to be sustained as much as you can. To not expense it in a certain, like, like our other accounts, you know, you need to, like the school choice, you're bringing in less than, you know, you don't want that. Reverse where you're spending more than you're bringing in, right? So I guess. In in keeping them in a, an amount that's healthy and that's sustainable for a certain amount of period, I would say. Is it beneficial to say, okay, we're gonna, you know, based on the trend of what we're getting in. To build these funds on an annual basis, like to keep them a little bit, you know, healthy. That we, if we get in a certain amount, then this means we would, you know, we would want to expense up to this amount. I don't. Um, that we, if we get in a certain amount, then this means we would, you know, we would want to expense up to this amount. I don't know. I just wanted to. Better understand, it might help for planning for financial aid or the, the conversations that come up with um. You know, trips or opportunities for kids that are looking to go abroad. But I don't know what we bring in.
The demand has not been enough uh, that I have seen to, to threaten the balances where I would have to do something like that.
Okay. All right.
It's almost for the exception versus uh, regular budget item, right? As they come up.
They get mayor.
Uh, it's almost like um, it's used as an exception, not, not a regular, a regularity. Yeah.
Yeah.
Great. Um, I will, uh, Mauro.
Um, I don't, I don't have anything that, thank you very much, Wayne. It's very comprehensive, as usual.
Alexis?
I don't have anything. Every question I had was answered in the document.
Great document.
Yes.
Mary?
Yeah, thank you so much, Wayne. This is like, there's just so much work that goes into it. It's really greatly appreciated and it. It's um, it's a great tool for us to be able to utilize with the, the other boards too. And I had sent an email actually about um, about that foreign exchange um, account a little while ago. So. Um, about the previous conversation that we were having.
Yeah, yeah, no, I remember actually we've talked a little bit here and there about it, but then hearing about the Quebec trip that also got me thinking about it again. Um, and I just, you know, want to make sure, I guess, to, you know, Hillary's question earlier that. Um, if there's an amount that either principals are aware, like this is, you know, that there's, we're not. Are telling someone, no, that there, there's not understanding that there is a resource potentially for someone who's in need. And I don't know what that need exactly is, but. I would rather it be known that there is an opportunity versus us saying no first and then um, you know, disappointment. So however, that needs to be communicated or understood or planned. That's kind of what I was getting at, Wayne, is more a little bit that the awareness that there are opportunities, if it's not in danger, even better. You know, but just making sure that maybe the message with um, the schools need to be, Brian. And the principals or the trips when they're planning trips is, you know, before they say no, you know, maybe check with um, Wayne. I think that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, we'll clarify with admin. I haven't. I have not heard that anyone's asked and been denied. And for this, for, so I don't know that that's actually happened.
Yeah, no, I, I, well, I, I think, I mean.
It definitely happened because they wrote to me and like told me about the conversation, but it may have, it.
It'd be nice if people actually reached out to the schools because we can't do anything if we don't know about it. Like literally. I haven't heard of it and I do, I'm not saying it didn't happen, but I'd be glad to try and find a resolution if I know about it.
Right.
That's all.
Okay.
It would be helpful. I, I hope.
I think maybe what really needs to happen is similar to, you know, the athletic fees that. There needs to be a note on the stuff that came home.
Yep.
Basically saying, if you have financial hardship for this, please let us know so we can work with you.
Yeah, agreed.
It might just be that simple. Exactly.
Yeah. The, a parent had posted a GoFundMe on a town page and um, talked about how sad her child was about not being able to go on this trip. And so I reached out and asked if it was Maynard and she said yes. And um, I was like, every, every trip we've approved, we've talked about. Having support to make it inclusive. And um, she said she didn't know about any support. And so I suggested reaching out to the person, teacher running it or the principal. And when she said, she said, she wrote back and said she did and they said there's no support. And so that's why I actually brought it up to Natasha a couple of weeks ago and was like, can we look into this more? Um, but it, it may just be, the signals are getting crossed and.
Yeah.
People hear no and then just get sad and move on. Um.
Well, so the sto, end of the story is yay, there's opportunities, right? And so that is the silver lining. I want to make sure is that there is opportunities. And um, and we just want to make sure that people understand that, explore that first and that the teachers understand that there's resources they can. You know, maybe fall back on and ask about um, before we go. So thanks, everyone.
It might be nice if that message can get disseminated and with regards to applications we don't know about yet. Like, you know, we've talked about it for activities fees, we've talked about it for trips, like, there may be things that come up that we don't know to talk about. But just like in general, if there's things that kids would be prevented from participating in. Because of funding, like in some way bring it up so we can try to find a way.
Well, this one's, this fund is particular for the foreign.
Oh, no, definitely. But just in general, like.
Yeah.
Hmm. I don't know.
No, I think all good, all good thoughts there. Um, so our kids can benefit from the best opportunities possible. Um. Hillary, did you have any other questions or anything?
Um, just a quick one. Um, mostly just because I come back to, I love this, this document that you create for us and I come back to it every time that I have. Questions about budget. And so um, for the, the, on page five with the preschool expenditures chart. Where it has the twenty-five thousand for instructional supplies and then the like three thousand for preschool expenses. Is the instructional supplies, like, what's, what's the difference between those two? And is the Green Meadow instructional supplies covering older grades than preschool from the, or is that? Like, can you tell me about those two bars?
The, the instructional supplies and what they make the playground?
The preschool expenses, like the three thousand, the two nine eight oh.
The two preschool expenses, the two nine eight oh. Um. I'd have to go back and look and see what I had that are in those, those columns. Um, because you know, you kind of, you kind of summarize them into groups and put them on there so that. Yeah, otherwise your graph would, would be so, um, so I'd have to go back and look and see what's in there. I don't, the top of my head, I don't remember exactly what's in there. Um, but.
I guess, do, do, is any of the preschool tuition go to cover supplies and older grades?
No.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
Uh, Mary?
No, I am good. Again, it was greatly appreciated.
Okay, did I get everyone? Uh, I think so, right? Um. Wayne, I had one more question for you. It was about the grants, the S R three grant. This was the one I was trying to remember. So. Um. We, looks like we overspent it. How much did we overspend it by that we had to, I'm guessing we had to absorb it elsewhere? In the budget?
Now, what it is, is the end date for the grant is after the end date of this report. And so at the time, I think I said this year that it was overspent and either I would ask. Charles and Chuck to either cancel an encumbrance or we would transfer that expense to another account. So the S R went until September thirty, this was June thirty. So as of that date, it, it was over, which isn't a problem. It just can't be over when the grant closes. And that's what we did. Anything that.
Got it.
We either, they cancel the encumbrance, which made the expense go away. Or it was transferred somewhere else, but the grant closed and it, it was not over.
Okay, so at the time of the report, thank you for clarifying. So the time of the report, because I did see that as the report is overspent, but I wasn't sure. I was trying to make sense of what I was under. So really it was just that um, by the time the year closed, which was when the grant closes as September thirtieth. Then the encumbrances were cleared or whatever was created. So in that window between June and when the grant ended. You were able to resolve what was already um, kind of earmarked for that.
Report is overspent. This is not an issue at this point. It has encumbrances that can be canceled slash reduced, or some of its expenses can be transferred somewhere else.
We don't, but you don't know how it was resolved. I'm guessing encumbrances probably are the likely.
I mean, I could go back and look, you know.
Okay. Nope, that's, that's fine. Um, it's only another question. So thank you very much. Thanks for the hard work and getting us um, staying in the block. All right, we'll see you for another ten more years.
Is that all?
Oh, Colleen?
Just a time check, we're twenty minutes over.
Thanks, Colleen. All right, thank you. All right. So Wayne, thank you very much for your information. I appreciate it. And um. We are now going to move on to the superintendent goals. So um, I think to level set everyone's um, understanding of where we were. So Brian had sent. His goals to us, the school committee was able to meet. Um, and we weren't able to meet until Monday. So thank you, Brian, for your patience. Um, and you know, as we needed to coordinate our efforts. Um, we reviewed the goals, I believe the themes of the goals. From what we were able to review are, are the same in, in their. Um, in their theme, there was some clarification on um, enhancing them to make them more smart, I guess, in the sense of. What the school committee was hoping to see more measurable and outcome by. Um, and then there was the addition of one goal regarding the vision of a, a student, which was really probably just. I think closing the loop on the N E S C um, information. So I know that you just earlier. Um, just a few hours ago, where it was able to see the revised information um. For the feedback a- after that was consolidated and had a chance to kind of really get eyes on it. Um, so I, I think that this, I would look at this as an opportunity to one, let's maybe go one by one to see. You know, what your questions are for ones that you feel um. Are reasonable, not reasonable, you feel like they're unattainable, like just to hear a little bit more of your sense. Um, and we, we don't have to vote tonight. Um, if you're not ready. Um, we can schedule another meeting next week, you know, just short to just do the goals if there's some tweaking that needs to happen as well. So I just want to kind of. Um, put all that out there for everyone on the same page. I think this is just, you know, kind of like, this is what. The school committee had feedback on, this is what we were kind of proposing to tweak. Um, and just to get your take on what those were. So do we want to just maybe start just going with one and in sequential order? Is that okay, Brian?
Sure.
Okay. Um.
I mean, honestly, I probably need some time to process through them. I saw, I only saw them about twenty minutes before this meeting. That was the first time I've seen them.
Okay.
Um, and, and to your point, I would say they do mirror in, in theme, the same goals that I had proposed. Um, so I'd love a chance to process through them and maybe come back to you with some suggestions that, you know, and I think these are helpful. I mean, one obvious thing that I will, that, that strikes me is that ensuring a hundred percent of anything is sort of not attainable.
Okay, so let's.
I mean, I look at that and it's right, if we say a hundred percent of students, that means if I have one student out of twelve hundred who doesn't do that. You don't meet that goal. That, the hundred percent mark doesn't always seem reasonable. But I need to sort of process through and then come back to you with like, what would that look like? Because in reality, I would love it to be a hundred percent. I just don't know that that's ever a reasonable number.
So one of the things I know, when we, yeah, no, absolutely. And I don't want these to feel like they're unattainable goals, right? Um, because we're, we're not setting up for, they need to be attainable. I want you to feel like, you know, yeah, if it's like ninety percent that you're not feeling like. I didn't achieve my goal, right? That's not really, they're not like gotcha goals. Um, in, in that sense, but so I think maybe there's opportunities to think about wording, like, so we could maybe like target. And I think it was one of the ways that we, you know, considered that we could kind of soften. So we would target. You know, now if it comes to lower than that, great. Like, I don't think anyone in the school committee is going to be upset. Um, you know, or is, is intending to hold it against you if you, you know, if there's ninety-five percent, right? Or, you know, I think it's more of the target of, let's set it the bar high, right? And um, and then work our butts off, which I think everyone does anyway.
Agreed.
To do that. So how, yeah, please process.
So let me, let me think, process through, digest, come back with some wording. I'm not opposed to anything I took a look at.
Okay, so one of the, the top one, um, well, just kind of go over high level then. So you don't really need to like, feel like you needed to, you know. Make an assessment right now, but just so that we're all together speaking about it. Uh, the first goal as it um, was proposed in a revised version was by June twenty twenty-five to increase the percentage of students meeting grade level standards in ELA and math. By five percent for all students, including EL and special education students. And to ensure a hundred percent of students demonstrate at least a year's growth using MAPS growth, uh, boy, moi, I don't know, can't remember what this was, uh, data. As well as any other relevant assessments, metrics. Um, and we have the benchmarks in there. Um, the K through eight literacy um, analysis presentation by November twenty twenty-four to the school committee using quantitative data. Uh, and then underneath another benchmark, conduct district, school and grade level data meetings monthly to review MAPS growth. Starting from September twenty twenty-four. Uh, measurements would be, this is where again, that target of five percent uh, increase of grade level standards. With the assessment and then also professional development, provide professional development on CKLA and Carnegie Math implementation and data interpretation by February twenty twenty-five. So that's how it was written in, you know, and proposed back. Um, I think Brian, would I, would, and I'll kind of go around to the school committee. Um, but just some of the takeaways from our conversation in our workshop. Um, was one, I think there has been a lot of time for the, like the ELA curriculum in particular, has been out there the longest. And so. Um, if there is a need to pivot in any way, and, and I go back to what you shared in your, your um. Your superintendent memo about what the things that are be, doing. Do we feel that the results of the curriculum from K through three or all the grades up are, are putting or showing and demonstrating growth that we would. Based on the investments that we've had in the curriculum. Um, and if not, which is possible, where do we feel that we need to pivot and do that? Is it more PD? Is it that maybe K through three needs a core curriculum, right? Maybe they don't have one right now. That's the one that. This is where Karen can come speak to that a little bit more when she talks about the data and how she's, you know, newing it. So I think that's where we would want. As a school committee to hear more about, since the results are not showing the growth so far and we're in year three. Where, at what point do we reassess and pivot? And, and how are we doing that? So I think if you can think about that in the sense for your, your goal. Um, and that we would also want to see growth, of course, across the school, like we know, targeting those groups essentially, absolutely, but. Elevating growth across the board. So however that language you feel might be more reasonable for you, I think the school committee would be open to that, but it would just be. That theme of how do we say, again, it could be just target, you know, ninety percent or whatever you think, but I, I think that's an open conversation piece. I don't think anyone, you know. I don't think anyone in the school committee felt like they were stuck on that. I, I don't want to speak for everyone, but Mary, I don't know if you had any other thoughts on. That goal one, if that was a re, kind of a, a good assessment of our conversations.
To your point, I think what our, our, my, I should speak for myself. My, my concern was that we're really targeting the increase for the students that are. Uh, were struggling versus, you know, we've got a, everybody should be improving. Um, so to have, to have it be an overall. Goal for everyone to have improvement is, and, and if it's not a hundred percent, then just tell us, you know, strive for a hundred percent or something like that, but.
Okay, yep.
Basically it, otherwise do really well, Natasha.
Yeah, and I think also with Brian, I wanted to just, I know Brian, you shared this with me, but I think it's important for the school committee to hear is that. You know, like we may have seven percent growth, right? And, and, and so like, it's not that, you know, with target, we could be whatever, but because Maynard is small. And to your point, the, you know, one person can really, you know, and we see this with our MCAS stuffs, right? One person can really drive the needle a little bit stronger either way. And so I think that's a really good point to kind of take in and understand. Um, as we're, you know, thinking this as well. So um, Alexis, did you have any other thoughts on the, the goal one? Oh, you're muted, sorry. I, I read your lips.
God, I've been on too many meetings today. Um, so. I think you did a great summarization. Um. of what we talked about the other day in the workshop regarding this, so I really don't have anything else to add. I think once we refine it a little bit more, and I really think when we get that presentation, I think that's going to drive more of the conversation and potentially some of the issues or concerns that than I might have with some of the data that we're seeing.
Thank you, and I think also, just as a reminder to everyone as well, which I think we all know, but just to call it out, is that we will have a midpoint, right? So that would be like late, whatever, late January, so there is that assessment, like, hey, this is not working, or do we need to pivot from the goal benchmarks that we're putting? Or maybe there's emphasis that you're like, you know what, we, we had to do this instead, and so we're going to add this as a, you know, so there is that pivot, it's not this now and forever, that I want to make sure that we all are in agreement and understand that there is that revisiting moment as well, so Mauro?
I don't have anything for this first one. Thank you.
Hillary?
I don't have anything extra, except that sort of spinning off from Mary's point about making sure that all the kids move up the one grade level, I really do appreciate though, the focus on closing that gap for the other kids, just as long as, you know, that all the kids are still included.
All right, so, and then just before we kind of move on, Brian, you know, maybe you and I can connect on what your, your thought processes, so we can schedule, you know, a school committee meeting at some point next week, maybe later on in the week, even if it's just, you know, a quick thirty minutes to just do a vote on the goals or something like that. But just so we can kind of get these approved for you after you've had a time to process a little bit more.
Just remember that Thursday is
Right, Halloween, right.
Okay, yes. Got it, Halloween. Halloween, all right, goal two, professional practice DEI committee. So this goal was a little bit tweaked, it was facilitate the Maynard DEI committee in analyzing the twenty twenty-four climate survey for the students, staff, and parents, and create a DEI action plan for implementation by March twenty twenty-five. The process benchmarks would be, the first one is to host the twenty twenty-four data equity walk by October twenty twenty-four and post a presentation online, but I think we've, that's already kind of in the works, or because there was, wasn't there some equity at the high school, or?
Yeah, at each of the back to school nights.
Right, exactly, so I think that's kind of in the works already. Second benchmark process, partner with UMass Lowell to refine and administer updated surveys to student, staff, and parents by March twenty twenty-five, and then the measuring impact is by January twenty twenty-five, present a report with survey results and a DEI improvement action plan to the school committee. The next one would be take steps towards professional development, implementation of an evidence-based and comprehensive K through twelve approach for teaching and discipline such as responsive classroom by June twenty twenty-five, and then the third measuring would be to implement survey-based changes by June twenty twenty-five to improve DEI initiatives. And so, again, I just want to circle back to the school committee on, on this one, I think that the kind of the theme through a lot of these, Brian, is that there has been so much data that's been collected, and I think to the great, great excitement of everybody, that we've gotten data, because that's what we want to make sure that we're doing, you know, we're collecting data and the making data-informed decisions, but that, I think there is a strong appetite to really kind of see what we're doing with the data in motion, and what you are, you know, challenging your leadership team and the building principals and the, and the staff to really kind of take those steps, and which are, I'm guessing are already underway, but it might just be that we need to be connecting the dots, like, these are the survey results, and these are actually, just kind of like how you do with the standards as well, something along that lines, and I think giving us a high-level overview, that presentation of this is the data, and this is what we learned, like, you've done, like, actually with the, the stay interviews, right? You summarize, and this is what, so I think along that lines is, is really what we're hoping to see. Hillary, did you have any questions or thoughts on this one?
Um, that's basically what you were just saying, is that, you know, we've had the data, and now, like, ultimately, the goal of the surveys is to see the effectiveness of the changes that are, identify the, what areas need changes, and then to assess the effectiveness of it, and I think we're missing that piece from year to year. And like Natasha said, I mean, there are a lot of things that are being done, but like specifically some of the things that the survey identified, you know, a year and a half ago, like, what is being done to address that specifically? And is, does the data show that it was effective? But yeah, basically what Natasha said.
Okay.
Mauro, anything on this particular goal, or?
I did just have a clarifying question. I'm assuming that the this measuring impact of January twenty twenty-five report is from last year's survey. Correct?
I think that's what we were talking about, so maybe this is where I'll look to the school committee for confirmation, because there was survey results that we got last year, Hillary, and then what we're looking for is the act, like an action plan, is that, that's what I, I want to make sure I understood the takeaway there from our conversations.
Yeah, from like the original, like, student one, then the parent one, and like, basically all the, all this, all of the survey data we've had from the last
Right, so they've done the data collection, and, okay, does that make
I just wanted to make sure, because the, in the benchmark, you're taught, it talks about a survey, another survey for March twenty twenty-five, and obviously you can't have the survey after the
Yeah, so that's one, yeah, okay.
Right, so I'm just making sure that we're talking for the for the measuring impact, that that twenty twenty, January twenty twenty-five is from the
Using twenty twenty-four
Survey, yes, yes. We just put that in, just to be clear.
I think that the dates are a little bit shifted in terms of just getting started with this process, but in theory, you know, there would be the survey, changes would be implemented, the next survey would measure the effectiveness of those changes, and every year going forward, but as we're getting started, it's sort of like, if the plan is created for January, those, it's not going to be implemented and showing an effect by March, but just sort of get the process started.
Yeah, so the, so maybe we'll meet up, let me make sure I'm understanding, so really what we're saying is that, so the survey process benchmarks, number two, is a, is a new survey, this is just an updated survey that will go out March partnering, as they did last year, right? So that is separate from measuring impact, but I think I understand your, your, what you both are saying, is that we are not measuring the impact of that survey, right? We're measuring the impact of, the presentation is from the prior year survey, right, is what we're looking, so then I think that measuring impact number one needs a little tweaking.
Putting the dates of the survey, or
year. Yeah, by presenting a report with survey with
Because it feels like there wouldn't be an impact survey until March of twenty twenty-six.
So school year twenty-four survey results, and DEI plan based on those, is that based upon those, is that right?
Right.
Okay. Okay, something along those lines, but I think in theory, Brian, do you understand that?
Yeah, I hear, I hear the conversation, yeah, I can tweak that.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, and so, Mary, did you have any other?
Nope, it's all about the action plan for me, because again, you know, we've, we've, we have the surveys and that, but it's how, what are we implementing, and, and just the action plan, just to, to get it off paper and into into working, so it's, it's said there.
Great, did I catch everyone, so make sure, Alexis, did I get, Alexis, did I get you for this one?
Yes, I'm good.
Great, all right, so moving on to the community goal three, communication and community outreach. Brian, this is, again, just this kind of a small tweak in the sense of we, we wanted to add the budget override aspect into this one, which I think, again, I think it's understood, but where you, you're, you know, you're going to the meetings, and you're going to play a critical role in that aspect, so we, you know, refined the language and, and that number three, you know, thank you, who's that, whoever's in green cursor, thank you very much, for but is to just kind of lead the conversations when it comes to the school budget overrides, you know, participating, which you're planning to do anyway, with the quad board meetings, finance meetings, and lead the conversations outlining the school department's ten-year operational projections, it's supposed to be operation projections. Operational projections to inform Maynard residents. Maynard, oh, I can't, literally, I can't type Maynard. Residents. All right. Okay, so beyond that, it was just, it's again, I think the measuring, we didn't, we didn't really add a measuring thing for that, but I think the measuring would be the, it passes, you know, the override passes.
No, that's not fair.
I know, you can't control that, I know.
I'll work it, I'll work to support it.
Yeah, no, I think it's all that we all collectively work for that, but that people feel informed, right? We want to make sure that that's, the community is informed, and I don't know the right way to measure that, to be honest with you, because I feel like no matter what we do sometimes, so you get, you get somebody like, I never knew the school needed money, or whatever, so, so I don't think it's fair exactly to put a measuring piece there, but I think that's just something we want to make sure that's, you know, included in aspects. Any, any questions on this particular, Mary?
I just had a thought about, you know, we've got Green Meadow in there, we've got the high school pathways, followers, and essential piece too, I don't know if it's even just incorporating, you know, the continuing educating the, especially the parents and caregivers about staying in Maynard versus going elsewhere. I don't know if that's too much to add to that, but, I mean, it's being done anyway, but just to just to codify it, that that's such an important piece, because we lose so many of our students at that middle school level.
I think there is that outreach, right, about for the middle school, that's happening now anyway, so maybe Brian, if you want to, if you want to work that into that goal,
Yeah.
About the work that you, you and the team are doing to, for the fowler, towards student retention, and outreach, like the dinner, all those things, I think that would be, thanks, Mary, for bringing that up.
I'm just making a note.
Yeah, make, no, no, yeah, absolutely, this is kind of, this is, yeah, I mean, you're, it's it's intended to recognize, like, exactly every school reflecting of the work of all the schools. Mauro?
I was just thinking about, like, the, the measuring impact for some of that stuff, and I just, I think, you know, you've used, previously, you've, you've used, you know, that you're going to be, you know, some of your community outreach is like, you know, I'm sending out the smores, and, you know, that kind of stuff, maybe that it, making sure that that, these things are included in the smores in, you know, whatever you're sending out to the community is in there, that that's, you know, part of the measuring impact, so.
I can. Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alexis, anything on this one?
Nope.
Okay, Hillary, anything on this one?
No.
Okay. All right, and then the last one is the new goal, Brian, this is when we talked about the, the NIASC vision of a graduate and curriculum maps. So by June twenty twenty-five, fully integrate the vision of a graduate into the MyCap framework, and ensure a hundred percent of curriculum maps are completed and aligned with the MyCaps curriculum, so again, this has a hundred percent in there, I know that feels, you know,
I can work on wording, I'm, okay. I'll work on wording.
And I know this is one that you probably need to work, you know, Liz and Chuck as well on, on that one. So because this is a new one, I want to make sure I go over the, the benchmarks to make sure they make sense to you, you know, as far as what we're thinking of, and, and also for the school committee, because we added this, that the curriculum maps would be, you know, aligned, alignment for the curriculum maps with MyCaps, and will be reviewed and finalized by district leadership with evidence of crosswalk documentation for all subject areas by March twenty-five. Vision of a graduate by March twenty twenty-five, student assessments and academic plans will reflect alignment with the vision of a graduate competencies. And then measuring impact by March, I mean, by May, sorry, twenty twenty-five, a hundred percent of relevant staff will demonstrate proficiency in integrating the vision on graduate into curriculum. So I don't know how that makes sense with what you're, you know, again, mulled over.
And I'll think, I go back and review the NIASC report as well, just to see where we're at, I'll talk with Liz about that, just to make sure that that matches what we're doing and how we're doing it.
Exactly, and we can tweak where, where we need, I think ultimately with this one, we're probably about, I think about eighty percent there, and I think this is really just trying to close the loop on, on that. I would really, and I think this is where the school committee brought, we really want to start sharing, like, in the community, like, what our vision of, like, does people know what our vision of a graduate are, you know, and how we actually, all the work that's been put into that, really make that a prominent advertisement, or just, you know, of, of all the things that we've done, and make it a useful tool for Maynard, like, want students to understand what that looks like, parents, community, and maybe there's community feedback at some point as well. So Alexis, did you have any thoughts on this one?
Nope, I'm good.
Mauro?
No, I'm good too.
Okay, Mary?
Nope, the language pretty much did come from the NIASC, from their visit, so, just so that you know that, that's where, you know, we sort of came about this, but yeah, all else is great.
Right, Hillary?
No, it's great.
Okay, all right, so I think what it sounds like, thank you, Brian, for for your patience and just hearing this, and I really, I know that we'll plan on why don't you think about it, you know, today, tomorrow, and just, just let me know what you think, you know, if you'll be ready to you know, vote on something, ask for us to vote on something next week, or do you think may need more time than that? Just so I can throw together an agenda, you know, next week for coordinate with the school committee.
Yeah, I don't think I'll need a lot of time, it's just next week, I know I have a commitment on Wednesday, and Thursday's Halloween, so it probably
Maybe even early, yeah, early the following week, I mean, we could just, again, I imagine it's going to be
I'm not concerned, we'll get this done quickly, absolutely.
Okay, all right, so we'll coordinate that, no, thank, thank you very much, and thank you for the staff, for all the work that's happening behind the scenes too as well, so, all right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, so now we're just going to go ahead and move on. Is this the chair report? Yes, chair report. A couple of things I just wanted to call out to folks on, we, let me actually, we proposed some budget, some changes in our, 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 our meeting calendar. Let me go over what they were, because I just closed it out, it was from our budget meeting, we talked about it. And this, again, Alexis, you, you're probably less familiar with this, but we usually in December, like, late November, December, sometimes need to tweak some of our school committee meetings, because we are aligning it to our budget timeline, of when we need to do some, like, presentations to the school committee, and when we need to make an approval of the superintendent's request, so Brian, he shares with the school committee, like, this is what I'm requesting for it, so it's really like, and it's a dollar amount, ultimately, that we will say, yes, we approve this request for the town, from the town. The town needs that by the charter by January first, but we generally will get it to them like by mid, mid-December, so we kind of like walk backwards, the school committee also doesn't like to vote on the first time we see it, right? So we, we get a presentation from Brian, you know, everyone has time to process it a little bit, you ask some questions, and then at the, a subsequent meeting, then we would, you know, vote on, on that, so with that in mind, let me pull actually up my Um, with that in mind, um, let me pull actually up my. The, actually, what do I do with the?
Cause I have it if you need.
Oh, I got it, sorry, um. All right, so upcoming budget specific date, so, uh, we have, first I'll just kind of review the upcoming dates, we have, we had the town budget subcommittee meeting last night, we kind of talked about that a little bit already as a school committee, we have the, um, quad board meeting is November twelfth, and that's at six thirty, it will be a hybrid meeting, uh, Brian and Wayne are going to work on, just like, maybe like two slide-ish, um, of, of kind of highlighting what we would look like our 10-year, and they, he already kind of, they've already done some of this exercise already, so it's really just updating with, you know, numbers, um, what a 10-year production would look like, that we might need for an override, um, there are some, um, certain things that, you know, because we have two contracts this year that are, um, will be under negotiation, so obviously there's a lot of things that can't be with certainty on what that would be from, um, so that has been shared last night with the, the subcommittee, that look, you're gonna get a very, an estimate, um, but we want to make sure that if we seek an override, that it's a sustainable override, that will, what that dollar amount will do for, you know, how that will play out for 10 years, that we're not gonna be next, next year or two years coming back and looking for money, so they're gonna work on that exercise and, and, um, and provide some data on that, and we'll, at the subcommittee, Mary and I will be meeting on, with, with Brian and Wayne again on November seventh, just to, um, kind of like, prepare a little bit more for what that presentation looks like. Um, the capital request, that's due soon, so Wayne and Brian will send that to the school committee, and it doesn't look like anything out of the norm, so it really is gonna be focusing on facilities primarily, so you have roof, lighting, uh, W A V M, maybe some carpeting, um, in the library at Fowler, things to that effect, uh, which a lot of them are carryover, we did talk about the potential of, um, does the track need to be looked at, uh, to get an estimate of put that on the CAPS comm, so we're gonna, I think, bring that up. What is the appetite of the town for us to really, I don't want to make sure we're not absorbing these expenses of going out and assessing all these things independently, so if there's a diet, a desire for the town to, you know, to seek out more information for maybe looking at a comprehensive project in the future, right, like a the athletic complex, then I think the next step might be, let's get the track inspected, right, and what does that look like from a wear and tear perspective from, um, at any point, so. Those are some things that we talked about, um. We will have, oh, November fifteenth is when the annual budget statement from the select board and the town administrator is due, which is, you probably can look at last year's, and it'll be probably the same thing, and they'll just change the date. Um, basically, don't spend more, you don't hire anybody is pretty much the theme, I don't know, maybe they'll change up a couple of words. Uh, November twenty first is when we're gonna have, oh, sorry, going back, November seventh is when, uh, Mary, we're having Jamie, um, yes, Jamie, Senator Elridge is actually gonna be coming to our school committee meeting, it'll be remote, and then.
Does he know that it's gonna be remote?
No, I gotta tell him, we just decided that today, or just learned that today, so I will tell him.
We just confirmed that today, so, um, and then November twelfth, I'm sorry, November twenty first is when Kate will be joining, and that's also when we're gonna have the principals, school councils, and, you know, a report out from, from the school boards about what their budgetary, school-specific, um, areas of concern are as well.
Um, just add to, to that, I know, last year, I think it was last year, the year before, Brian, we started including, and I don't know if Tony's gonna be back yet, um, the, um, the long-term, the facilities, um, what his requests are for, and I don't know if that's same, the same as the capital, or if there's anything else, but we did start having them be part of that presentation. So I don't see that here, so I just want to make sure that he's given the opportunity also, um, to do that, if everybody is okay with that.
Yeah, I, when I, I think, um, department heads, I assume, yeah, that would be one of those areas, like special ed, you know, um, we, we've had, and I do remember us getting like a, a facilities.
Right, um, it's fairly new, that piece of it's fairly new, so I just want to make sure that it's incorporated.
Yeah, that's a good point, Mary, thanks, um. Okay, and then looking at, this is kind of going back what I was originally mentioning, so December fifth is when we will have, Mary and I will, will get a, a kind of a, the initial preview of the presentation and the budget subcommittee from, uh, from Brian and Wayne. Um, we, in, it may, um, be in Google uh, format, so the ClearGov is not quite yet, um, go, go, go for creating presentations, they're still doing a lot of background implementation and data, so at some point it may transition to ClearGo format, but it might start off in this initial version in a, a Google presentation, so we'll do that, we'll get a first peek in December fifth, and then this is where the meetings, um, change, right now, what we have penciled in is December twelfth and December seventeenth for school committee meetings. And I just wanted to see one of them, the seventeenth, that's the one we're proposing to move to a Tuesday instead, because the Thursday is right before break, and I think a lot of, um, people might be leaving, it's right before the weekend, a long weekend and the holiday break, so does the seventeenth and the twelfth work for school committee meetings? For folks?
I already have the twelfth on the calendar, but for the seventeenth, I can't meet until seven thirty.
Okay.
I have a prior commitment.
That's fine, I think that would be fine, if that's okay with you, that we would still, you know, start, and then, okay, great, um, that you would just join like when you can, and you know, if it's easier, it will be hybrid, so if you're, you know, if not joining in person is, is later, then feel free to, you know, join remotely, um, does that sound? Mauro, does that sound okay with you as far as that date, the seventeenth?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, Hillary?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, and Mary, you were, I think you're good on that.
Okay, yep.
Okay, all right, um. And I think that was really, I feel like I'm missing something, I've talked about budget stuff so much, Mary, that I can't remember what I've talked about in different meetings as well, we talked about, oh, um, we will, Mary and I are gonna work on, um, a presentation or something for Jamie and Kate that we can provide to them, kind of like a two or three page, you know, just of the concerns that we've, we've shared collectively about the inequity with AMSA and ASABET and reimbursement and all of those things. Um, and we would hope to get that to, to them by November fifth, so that they have some context of what the questions that we will have, so just as a heads up, that is something that we'll be working on, just some data and putting together, something that's just the themes of what we're concerns are impacting Maynard, so if anyone has anything, um, really, you know, specific, we'll share it, of course, with the school committee, but, um, but I just wanted to, that's kind of what we'll, they'll have in, um, leading up to them coming to us, and then they may present to us, um, you know, based on what our concerns are as well.
And then Brian was gonna work with the super, I talked to the superintendent Hudson about the AMSA piece in a letter, um, potentially that we would sign on to or sign collectively, and then the select board is, is asking about that, so.
Thank you, that was the other piece too, so, um, the select board was, uh, was interested in signing on to any type of advocacy that we are putting together regarding, um, you know, funding or the in- increased enrollment, um, aspects which are due in December, so I think Brian's gonna look, uh, you know, work to see if there's something that can be, start, start put together, we can figure out what that looks like, and, um, but that, uh, the FinCom, hopefully we can get FinCom and the select board to, to sign on in support as well with that, so. I think that's really it on those budget updates, I know there's been, there's a lot of upcoming events just around town, so there's, like you said, tonight was, you know, downtown trick or treating, and there was, um, this weekend, there's, uh, there's, oh, the, the, there's a ball or something, a Halloween masquerade thing, then there's, uh, I think there's an email that went out about the parade coming up or in December to start marking our calendars for that. So just a lot of stuff that's happening around that, I think just for, you know, getting everyone getting into already the holiday, holiday spirit. So, um, I think I am done with my stuff, Mary, anything else budget related?
No, I think that was, you know, basically, yeah, the quad board that we really talked about it not being focused just on the schools, but also a broader conversation, I think that was heard, um, it's, you might get the more the meeting went on.
Okay, all right, um, Alexis, any updates from you?
Nope.
Okay, Mauro?
Um, I'm trying to, um, set up another, a policy subcommittee meeting with Hillary, so we'll figure out a date over the next few weeks, I hope. Um, and I wasn't sure what was happening with, um, the negotiation, if we're not, and nothing's happening.
Yet, I don't think they've sent a letter, Brian, I don't know, right, okay. So, all right, yeah, so I think that we start when they send a letter.
Okay.
And that's something, I'm just gonna highlight, okay, great. Um, so that's, great, um, and Mary, anything, oh, Hillary, I'm sorry, I think I missed you, sorry.
Not really, except, um, and I may have missed this one, I cut out, are we going to do another workshop for our goals?
Um, yes, we will, we'll need to do another workshop for our goals, um. Yeah, I'll put that on a list. Thank you, Hillary, um. Yes, we talked about, but then we, yeah, we focused more on Brian's last time, so we'll need a separate workshop for our goals. Um, one thing I actually wanted to mention, because I know we've talked about doing school committee like outreach, and as I was signing up for parent teacher conferences, I realized how cool Calendly might be as a tool. Yeah, what, I, I think I've.
Calendly.
Calendly, yes, I think, I was wondering, like, we might be able to set like the school committee up as, like, you know, who, if you want to schedule like talk with the school committee member, you know, so whatever date, so I just wanted to kind of pose that out there, now we've talked about like office hours or having some type of thing, I wanted to kind of maybe create something for us, that if folks are interested in, you know, you could like say, okay, this day I'm gonna be available for two hours, whatever, and you just dedicate, so if people want to sign up for the public for you, and maybe ask questions or whatever, that we could, you know, publicize this, you know, Colleen might be able to, you know, share this, but this might be an initial effort or step that we can just make ourselves individually maybe available once a month, or however that might be, so does this sound something worthwhile for folks, it would, I mean, the opportunity was, is really remote though, so I don't, I, I don't think it'll be a larger effort for, you know, coordinating like in person and where that would be, so I just wanted to kind of throw that out there as maybe as a a first pass, does this sound interesting to anyone to try to do?
Yeah, yeah.
So you're saying, so you're saying that it's, it's all remote?
At this point, I think the easier would be to start doing remote, like, so we'd like, hey, you know, Mauro, you could do this month, right, and then you pick a, I don't know, two days, maybe you want to say, um, this is this day morning or this night, or whatever you want to do. And then we can kind of make a schedule of these are the months, then the people who would be available, so if someone wants to come speak to a school committee member and ask questions, and it could be anything, like, you know, what's it like to be a school committee, we can have some leading things, you know, what is it like, what is the time commitment, we talk about this, like, leading, I don't want to wait till like election time, you know, to do that, so this is where I was thinking, maybe people asking us, what is, somebody might want to ask us about our budget or override, you know, at some point, and so, does this sound, before I go too deep in it, does this sound worthwhile considering for folks? Hillary, I don't know if you hear, or?
I can hear, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay, all right.
Although I really prefer if we met with two people together at once, because I always get nervous if it's in person.
I'm with you, Hillary, there, I think it makes sense to have two people.
Yeah, we can, we can do that, yeah, we can do like.
I was just, um, uh, picturing, you know, meeting with a bunch of people and, and they all have questions about budget. I'm not on that committee, some committee.
That's a good, that's a good point, so we'll mix it up, right, so Mary, we'll kind of like do that partnership, like policy and budget or whatever, okay, all right, so I'll start trying to, now that it seems like with those themes, like two people, you know, maybe monthly or whatever, I'll start proposing, putting something together and maybe building something for us and see if that works, um, all right. I think on that note, then, moving on.
Just a quickie, oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, the wellness, so the wellness committee, we met this morning, and, um, our first meeting for this year, and it was good, um, we've got the results of the, the most recent youth risk behavior, um, survey, so, um, everybody wants, so the next meeting that we have, we're gonna delve into it more, but one of the things that came out of it was that we're gonna have another presentation, like our, a video, like we did a couple of years ago, which was really, you know, well-received, and it seemed as though people really watched it, and it was clips from teachers and students and that about, um, culture and things like that, um, at the school, so, um, and also, um, Kate, our new assistant principal at Green Meadow, I thought she had a great idea, she, and I, I, I'm not sure if she brought this from Wellesley or not, but she, we had the conversation that it seemed as though parents are more anxious these days, so as a result, kids are more anxious, so we talked about the possibility of maybe having presenter, or, or, you know, she's gonna delve into it some more, because she said that it's really seems like that's, um, that's a thing, that, um, that seems to be happening, I don't know if it's COVID-related, or if it's just, you know, um, the way the world is right now, so, um, it was, it was, it was a productive meeting, so that was it.
Oh, you know what, I'm just gonna say this because it really bothers me, and I feel like, um, I know Brian, uh, we, we talked about it, but I know when we have these half-days on Fridays, kids, you know, go out in the community and, um, you know, like kids deserve the opportunity to go out and, and grow and ride a bike and whatever, without really having been publicly shamed on social media. So I just wanted, like, it really, it's become a thing every half-day, or something where, um, someone goes, kids are, you know, doing, and then someone starts, you know, these kids are here, and I, what I hear in the community is really no effort to engage, like, like if it is a safety issue, call the police, you know, like have the police come out and not, not from a punitive perspective, but just to look at the area that there's a lot of traffic with kids, and then maybe kind of educate it, whatever, or reach out to the principal, because they were talking about kids in the parking lot, and they're doing all this stuff, but it just really is, um, it was really unfortunate that there's just continuously every half-day or something now, um, kids going out, and then you have these adults who are going on and complaining, oh, these people in the parking lot or whatever, so I, I did talk to Brian about like, you know, making sure that, um, Allison is just kind of up to date and looped in, and maybe even the police department can kind of be more aware of, you know, the half-days, and so if there's, you know, that element that can help the community, um, but I really would, for the few people who are here, just, it just really, you know, please stop complaining about kids on social media, you know, we talk about anxiety, that doesn't help, you know? They don't need to be hearing about all their issues on social media from adults who are quite imperfect themselves.
Um, so it can be kind of tough, though, I, I had a situation a couple of weeks ago, I was driving past Green Meadow, and a child darted in front of all the cars to cross the bike, like, on a bike to cross the street, and I was like, can I, you know, can I email the principal and say, there's a kid that looks like this, or, you know, how, in what way can you do, I feel like we, being so small, you want to help protect the kids, even the kids you don't know, and it can get tricky to want to protect kids and not really have a way, and I was telling a friend, and she's like, post on social media so their parents can see, and I didn't want to, but that their intention was to protect the kids.
And I get that, the intention is to protect the kids, but I'll give you an example, we had an issue recently with kids who were in, in Market Basket, and there was like photos of kids who were taken in Market Basket and put on social media, and it was a one-sided story, and, you know, that's actually not the whole circumstance of what happened, and so.
And nobody should be posting anybody's photo.
But this is what happens, it spirals, it spirals easily, right, it's just spirals easily, there's no guarantee that, like you said, post on social media that the parent actually is gonna be on social media. There's, you know, you don't know if that was your kid either, like, you're just gonna go home and talk to your kid and just be like, hey, did you run across the street, I don't know kids are gonna be like, yeah, I did that, I was very dangerous today, you know, I, so I just think that, like, for me, as a parent, I would tell people, please don't post about my child on social media, just call the police, if there's a safe, like, hey, this kid's running around the dark, and I almost hit them, call the police, like, you know, can you just go look in the area to see if there are a group of kids, like, that's what the police are there. Like, that's what the police are there to do to help, you know, those kind of situations. That's what principals do. So that's where I get, I get the intent, like, oh, I just want to let people know, but it just spirals so easily from good intent to kid shaming, you know, when this happened. And that's what I think we need less of for our kids. Um, you know, not to mention on these half-days, uh, all these kids probably have all their parents' money, so I consider it really, they're spending, they're bringing money into the community, supporting local. So like, you deal with, you know, you, you got to deal with the kids if you want the kids' money. So anyway, on that note, that is all I have to say about that. Um, I think we'll just go ahead and we have no minutes for tonight, but we do have warrants, is that right, Colleen?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. So, um, without objection, I will, um, will accept warrant, the approved warrants, twenty-five zero-two-two, twenty-five zero-two-three, twenty-five zero-two-four. All right, no objection, and then I make a motion that we adjourn?
Circle.
Okay, all in favor? Uh, Mauro?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Alexis?
Yes.
Mauro, I mean, Mary?
Yes.
That was a trick, Natasha, yes. All right, have a good night, thank.